America's Town Meeting of the Air.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight. All about the Supreme Court and the Constitution. Should we change them or leave them alone? Come to Town Hall and talk it over. Town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight, town meeting tonight.
Historic Town Hall in New York City welcomes you to the twenty-first session of America's Town Meeting of the Air. Presented every Thursday evening at this hour by the League for Political Education and the National Broadcasting Company. I now present to you our moderator for this evening, Lyman Bryson, professor of education at Teachers College, who presided at the open forum meeting several weeks ago. Mr. Bryson is pinch-hitting tonight for Mr. George V. Denny Jr., founder and director of America's Town Meeting of the Air, who is on a short vacation. Mr. Bryson.
Good evening, neighbors. You hear these familiar words in an unfamiliar voice tonight. Mr. Denny, our moderator, has decided it was about time he was hearing this program over the air. So he is listening in, and he will be back with us again next week. I am asked, in this announcement, to include the statement that President Roosevelt today issued a proclamation urging prompt and generous contributions by all to the American Red Cross for a three-million-dollar relief fund needed in the present crisis caused by flood conditions. Contributions should be made to your local Red Cross chapter or to the national headquarters in Washington, DC. The president's proclamation of a three-million-dollar relief fund for the victim of the flood. Send your contributions to the Red Cross. You may recall that a month ago, Mr. Denny, the moderator, announced that we would bring to our platform here in Town Hall the writer of the most useful letter on the subject, Can We Solve the Crime Problem? Next week, we will discuss that subject, and we will have the writer of the best letter here on our program. Hundreds of people wrote in, many offering very similar solutions for the crime problem. Our committee selected the letter which is, in their opinion, the most constructively useful and interesting. The writer is Mr. Tom Lee Brown of Chicago, and we shall hear him next week. We wish we could have brought in some of the other letter writers. We appreciate the care and thought that many of you gave to this question. Tonight, we are discussing the Constitution and the Supreme Court. We Americans have had a good many arguments about the Constitution in our history. Whenever there is a serious crisis and the basic law restrains us from hasty action, there are always some who want to change the law. Others are thankful that the restraints are there, holding us in check, and the Supreme Court has come to be the final authority as to just what the Constitution means. At the present time, we are in the midst of one of our often-repeated public agitations of the question, does the Supreme Court have too much power? We are to hear this important issue discussed by two men who have scholarly authority and have also the power of speaking clearly to the average citizen. The Honorable David I. Walsh, Democratic Senator from Massachusetts, is a lawyer and a statesman. Dean Howard Lee McBain of Columbia University, whom we heard with great pleasure at a previous Town Meeting of the Air, is one of America's leading thinkers in the problems of public law. When these two gentlemen have concluded, we will ask them questions according to our custom. I now present our first speaker, the author of The Living Constitution, Howard Lee McBain, Dean McBain.
Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I am not here tonight to advocate the abolition of the power of the Supreme Court to declare laws of Congress void. I am here solely to explain, if I can, something about how this institution of judicial review works. I am going to talk exclusively about its application to laws of Congress. The Supreme Court's court voids many state laws. That in itself presents a serious problem that I put wholly aside. But voiding laws of Congress is not an everyday episode in the life of the Supreme Court. Indeed, down to the reign of the President Roosevelt, only sixty-odd laws of Congress had been held void in our entire history, and the great majority of these were of trivial significance. In all, only a scant ten or a dozen were of first-rate importance. Suddenly, the New Deal crop of laws changed all this. The pace of the court was vastly quickened. Five important laws have been destroyed by the court in the last fourteen months, and unless all signs fail, the end of the slaughter is certainly not yet. Now, most Americans, I'm sure, hold the Constitution of the United States in extraordinarily high esteem, and rightly. It is a marvelous document. We cherish and respect it because we have tried it in the crucible of long experience and have found it incredibly good. Now, I say this, ladies and gentlemen, not as hypocritical prelude to criticism. I say it because it is true. No sensible person wants to change the Constitution of the United States lightly. The Constitution is, in fact, so strong in the minds and the hearts of the people that it is quite able to stand upon its own record and have the truth told about it. It needs saving, if at all. I think it needs salvation chiefly from some of its idolatrous friends. Let's look at a few of the facts. This noble document contains some very explicit provisions. You and I can understand them, but it also contains some very inexplicit provisions. You and I cannot understand them. But under our system of judicial review, the court must understand them, whether they can or not. They must give them meaning and application, and so it comes to pass that, in respect of these vague and uncertain provisions, the Constitution says to the rest of us what the court says it says. We like to believe that ours is a government of laws and not of men. There is much of very precious truth in this dogma. We are governed by laws. Heaven knows if we lack the moral abundant life, it's not because of a lack of abundant laws. These laws fix for us the rules of the game of living together. They fix those rules in advance that they're being enforced. We know what to expect. Now, true, all laws must be interpreted and tied by men, but by and large, the laws are much more important than the men. This is all that is meant, I think, by our dogma of a government of laws rather than of men. Yet strange to relate, and contrary to the whole theory of its elevation and operation, nowhere in our entire system is the shift of emphasis from laws to men more pronounced in practice than in the topmost pinnacle of that system, the Supreme Court of the United States. That may sound to you like an amazing statement. I think it's nevertheless true, and let me add very promptly that this shift of emphasis is due in far less degree to the judges themselves than to the inherent nature of the function of the court. That function as a giver of meaning to a few great and vague constitutional phrases, phrases which, in simple and ungarnerished fact, have no clear and indisputable meaning. Let me illustrate by very recent events. "The Constitution empowers Congress to regulate commerce among the several states." Those are the Constitution's words. "Congress proceeds to regulate by requiring railway companies to provide retirement pensions for their employees." The court does not deny that these railways and their employees are engaged in commerce, but the court says, that the Constitution says, that the requirement of a railway retirement system is not a regulation of commerce. Congress did not know that. Four of the nine judges of the court did not know it, and nobody else knew it for sure until the court said so. The court further says that the Constitution says that this law deprives the railways of property without due process of law. Nobody knew that until the court said so. Take another example. "The Constitution empowers Congress to levy taxes to provide for the general welfare of the United States." "Congress proceeds to levy taxes in order to get funds to pay benefits to farmers who agree to reduce agricultural production." The court does not deny that this may be for the general welfare, but the court says that the Constitution says that a tax for this purpose is not a true tax. Nobody knew that until six of the nine judges of the court said so. These, I think, are perfectly fair illustrations of the way in which the court draws from constitutional phrases of vague and uncertain meaning concrete prohibitions that apply to specific laws of Congress. Now, how does the court derive from these nebulous declarations of the fundamental law? The particular thing that it says the Constitution says. It derives them in part, of course, from its own previous pronouncements. It follows precedents already established by its own former cases, but every one of these precedents can be traced back to a time when there was no such precedent, to a time, therefore, when the court first made the rule that grew into the precedent. Where did the court get the rule in the first place? Moreover, following precedent does not, at any event, tell the complete story because the court is not compelled to follow precedent. What deference the court will pay to its own past performances, and it usually does and should pay very great deference, but that is wholly up to the court. Of far greater importance, however, is the fact that cases still arise, strange as it may seem, or which there is no influencing or governing precedent. No precedent whatever governed the court, either in the railway retirement pension case or in the Agricultural Adjustment Act case. The points involved had not been previously decided either directly or inferentially. The court laid down new rules of application, rules that were wholly unknown theretofore. Where do such rules come from, ladies and gentlemen? They certainly do not come from any dictionary definitions of words that are found in the Constitution, yet the rules must come from somewhere. Where? I do not think it can be successfully denied by any fair-minded person that these rules and applications come chiefly out of the political, the social, and the economic philosophies of the judges themselves. Nor is this surprising. Given the vague phrases of the Constitution, and the court has been given them, given the power of the court to define and apply these phrases, and given the frailties of human nature which must be conceded to judges as well as to the rest of us, I do not see how the result could be otherwise. The result adheres in the system itself. There are five related elements in this system of judicial review that seem to me to emphasize the men who administer it rather than the laws that they administer. First, the action of the court falls after the policy of the law has been fixed by the legislature, and usually after the law itself has gone into operation, sometimes many months or even years after. Second, the rule that brings about this result is often not known in advance. It is not as though we could read the Constitution and see for ourselves that the law that Congress has given us is constitutionally phony. We simply do not know what the Constitution says on the subject until the court tells us. Third, and by far the most important element in the situation, the rule which the court finally applies to the law is often drawn from its own inner consciousness, as I have said, is determined by its own philosophy, is worked out by its own mental processes. Fourth, the pronouncements of the court have a degree of finality that is not commonly attached to the function of legislative or policy determination. True, the court's views may be overruled by amending the Constitution, but this is a long and arduous process, possible only when public opinion is almost overwhelmingly in favor of amendment. It offers no practical way of reasonably early escape from the rigidity of the judges' economic and political philosophies. Finally, the small number of judges, coupled with the frequency with which they irreconcilably disagree, stresses in striking fashion, or so it seems to me, the personal element, the government and men element, that enters into their determination of momentous questions of policy. The net result seems to be one of the most curious paradoxes in all institutional history. The subordination of all other laws, including laws of Congress, to the supreme law of the land is, in theory, a well-nigh perfect illustration of a government of laws, not of men. In theory, the Supreme Court is merely the instrument of effectuating this magistral reign of the higher law, but the theory does not wholly square with the facts. It fails of realization because the higher law speaks with such uncertainty, speaks in phrases of such vague and undefinable generality, that not infrequently the voice that is actually heard is the voice of the court rather than the voice of the Constitution, is the voice of men rather than the voice of law. The system itself requires of them, of the judges, a kind of faculty of clairvoyance. It transforms them, so to say, and I say this without the least disrespect, into a kind of crystal gazers. The crystals, their crystals are the opaque phrases of the Constitution, from which they extract meanings and applications. Those meanings and applications actually, of course, come out of their own mind. Now, speaking of crystals, let me make myself crystal clear on one point. Before, in this matter of the Constitution and the Supreme Court, I find that one of the easiest achievements in life is to be misunderstood. I do not mean that the Supreme Court is a body of nine capricious gentlemen who sit in their new marble palace in Washington, tossing laws of Congress into the discard to satisfy their whims. Any such thought is sheer nonsense. I do not think of them in terms of tyranny. That also is ridiculous. Their honesty and integrity, their intelligence in learning, their sense of responsibility and devotion to the interests of their country, as they see those interests, are wholly beyond reproach. On this subject, judges naturally have to hold their exuberance of speech in leech, but sometimes they break the bonds of deference both to their colleagues and to the legalistic theory of judicial review and call a judicial spade a spade. Said Mr. Justice Miller, dissenting sixty-five years ago with the first legal tender case, "The whole argument of the injustice of the law which the majority stresses substitute our idea of policy or judicial construction, substitutes an undefined code of ethics for the Constitution, substitutes a court of justice for the national legislature." Said Mr. Justice Holmes, dissenting in the case which, in nineteen hundred and five, invalidated the New York Baker's Law, "This case is decided upon an economic theory which a large part of the country does not entertain." Said Chief Justice Tass, dissenting in the minimum wage case, "It is not the function of this court to hold congressional acts invalid because they are passed to carry out economic views which the court believes to be unsound," and I could go on quoting a number of other instances of like remarks from the court. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I do not think it will do to gloss the facts over in this regard by resort to generalities. We are told that the court applying the Constitution is a bulwark of protection of our individual liberties. Potentially, it certainly is. The Constitution does contain some highly important guarantees of individual rights and immunities, and some of these protect us against arbitrary action by the government, but there's a lot of misapprehension about the liberties that the Constitution protects. Where these prohibitions restrict the power of the government to regulate relations between individual and individual, their crowning consequence is not to arm the individual against the government, but to arm him for the defense of his rights against rights which the government attempts to set in behalf of other individuals. I wish that there were time for me to illustrate that, but it is the character of some, at least, of the individual liberties that have been given constitutional benediction by the court. We also hear generalities about the protection of minorities against tyrannical majority. I suppose this means the majority in Congress. Well, the quick natural thought, of course, is that the Supreme Court also acts by majority. But apart from this, ladies and gentlemen, I cannot bring myself to believe all the frightful things that are said about Congress in this connection. I cannot believe that Congress is an enemy of the Constitution, ready and eager to tear it into bits but for the Supreme Court. I cannot believe that Congress is an enemy of individual liberties, anxious to put us all in a straitjacket of bureaucratic dictatorship. I cannot believe that Congress is an enemy of states' rights, hungry to gobble up the states and utterly destroy our federal system of government. I cannot believe, oh, well, to put it briefly and conclude, I cannot believe that Congress consists exclusively of a lot of alien and hostile nitwits.
Thank you, Dean McBain. Now, I shall present the Honorable David I. Walsh of Massachusetts. Senator Walsh ought to feel at home here tonight. He began his public career as moderator of Town Meetings in Clinton in his home state. Senator Walsh.
Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen. Whenever a law which has aroused sharp differences of opinion is declared invalid by the Supreme Court, criticism of the court and the power it exercises has invariably followed. Neither the present criticisms of the court nor the suggested remedies are new. They have been made in the past and will be made in the future by dissatisfied groups, whether Democrats or Republicans, wet or dry, progressives or conservatives, communists or socialists. To my mind, in any review of the question under consideration, two conclusions are incontrovertible. First, the Constitution of the United States reserves to the peoples of the several states all the powers and the absolute control of all their domestic affairs, which were not explicitly conferred upon the federal government. Second, the federal government may acquire power which it does not possess in one way only through the ratification by the people of the several states of an amendment to the Constitution. These propositions conceded. Where is the protection? And to what tribunal or agency can the people of the several states or the states themselves turn for protection against the seizure of the states' reserved rights by the federal government? Surely, there must be someplace they can go to. The Constitution, the accepted fundamental law of the land, and numberless precedent make the Supreme Court the tribunal to determine exactly what powers are and those that are not delegated to the federal government. To deny this power to the Supreme Court is to contend that the Congress itself has the unlimited power to say what powers it may exercise in complete disregard to states' rights. One group, let us consider the group, who are opposing the Supreme Court and its present power. One group opposing this power in the Supreme Court desires to make the Congress the sole judge of their powers in constitutional matters. To my mind, this position would scrap the entire Constitution and nullify all its provisions. A second group, admitting that the Supreme Court is a proper tribunal to preserve the powers reserved to the states only, proposed various legislative means to curtail the exercise of this power. Among them are the requirements of unanimous decision of the members of the court to declare a statute invalid, or that at least seven of the justices must overvote. We will discuss this hereafter. A third group seeks to deny the Supreme Court appellate jurisdiction in all cases except those in which original jurisdiction is granted to the Supreme Court in the Constitution. This would leave the court's jurisdiction only overshoot in which states, I quote from the Constitution, ambassadors, other public ministers, and councils are parties. The unsoundness of this position is manifest. If the appellate jurisdiction is taken from the Supreme Court, the district court would have jurisdiction to pass on the validity of laws passed by Congress, as the judicial power extends to cases involving the validity of such laws. The power of the district court cannot be taken away except by abolishing them. Abolition of these courts would be calamitous and disastrous, for there would be no agency to enforce the laws of Congress, except Marshall Force. Go away with those courts, you've got nothing left, to enforce the laws of your government, except Marshall Force. Unless the Supreme Court exercises appellate jurisdiction to review the actions of trial courts, there will be no remedy for a lack of uniformity of decisions, and chaos and confusion would result. One district court in Massachusetts makes one decision, one district court in California another, one district court in New York another decision, unless there's an appellate court. The Supreme Court has appellate powers to make the final decision as to which is the law of the land. A fourth group suggests that the Supreme Court should retain jurisdiction to pass upon the validity of acts of Congress that involve only violations of the expressed prohibitions in the Constitution, namely those embracing inalienable rights, twenty-two in number. This group said the court ought to have that right. But this group, however, insists that the Congress shall be the sole judge of the validity of legislation touching the general welfare, commerce among the states, taxation, the coinage of money, and so forth, and due process of law. The general welfare and commerce among the states involve purely regulatory powers, and if unrestrained with the suggested uncontrolled power to define due process of law, Congress could exceed its superiority and its powers at will. There would be no way that an individual citizen could prevent legislative encroachment upon his inalienable rights. This plan would abolish the Constitution by legislative enactment. Having enumerated the changes proposed by the various groups protesting the existing powers of judicial review, let us consider what these groups say. Briefly, this is, that it is inconceivable that the Supreme Court should have the power to declare acts passed by Congress and approved by the president to be in violation of the Constitution, for this permits the court to thwart the will of the people expressed by the representatives in Congress and their president. They further assert that the exercise of this power by the Supreme Court gives it the power to control the government, namely to make laws and determine policy.
Senator Walsh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but other stations are joining us at this time. This program is coming to you from Town Hall in New York. This program is coming to you from Town Hall in New York. ...and the Supreme Court. Our speaker at the moment is the Honorable David I Walsh, Senator from Massachusetts, who will now continue.
I have been reiterating what the opponents of the present powers that the Supreme Court enjoys say in defense of their position. Among other things, they say that the exercise of this power by the Supreme Court gives it the power to control the government, namely to make laws and determine policies. And it is further argued that the control of the government should not be confided to nine men, a mere majority of whom may hold within their power the well-being of the country as a whole. The fallacy of this contention is that the Supreme Court does not make laws. It exercises under the Constitution our merely negative functions. In declaring a law in violation of the Constitution, it is not thwarting the will of the people. The will of the people is as expressed in the Constitution. When they choose a President, when the people choose a President, and members of Congress, what do they do? They but express confidence in them, a confidence that Congress and the executive will only act within the provisions of the Constitution. If Congress enacts legislation approved by the President, which is in excess of their powers, it expresses the will of Congress and the President only. If the Constitution is to stand, and the elected representatives of the people are to respect its provisions and exercise only the powers they have been granted, we must have a Supreme Court to check and restrain the executive and the Congress from performing acts or passing laws in excess of their powers. Furthermore, furthermore, the express powers granted then must be exercised by them, subject to the express provisions found in the Constitution and the remembrance. Seems to me that this conclusion is irresistible, namely that the Supreme Court is necessary to prevent the invasion of rights of the individual and the enforcement of laws adopted by Congress that the Constitution expressly forbids. Let us now consider the manner in which the nine judges are to exercise the power of the court. Nearly everybody agrees that they ought to be, some tribunes exercise the power, and that the Supreme Court is probably the proper tribunal under the Constitution. Shall the power be exercised by a majority as now, by seven of the nine as some urge, or whichever require unanimous decision? It is alleged that five men can control the destinies of the country, and that there's two greater powers lodged in so small a number. Hence it is suggested that the decision should be unanimous, but this decision would permit merely one member of the court to uphold an act of Congress. Under this plan, an act of Congress which by its term takes the property of an individual for public purposes and declares it shall be done without just compensation, think of it, could be upheld by a vote of one man, even if every district court, every appellate court, and each of the Supreme Court judges said was unconstitutional, one man could stop it from being held unconstitutional. There is only a difference in degree in the suggestions that legislation shall not be determined invalid unless seven of the nine judges vote in infirmity. This would leave the power in three to do the same thing that the one might do if decisions are required to be unanimous. Furthermore, it would transfer the power from a majority to a minority of the court. The power of decisions must rest somewhere. This power was declared in the court at an early date, while denial of this power has been made from time to time since eighteen fifty-seven, since the Supreme Court has continuously exercised this power by a majority or more of its members, and no effort has been made by the people through a constitutional amendment to curtail that power, nor has Congress, if possessing the power, taken it away from the court. Single thing, nor did ever propose a constitutional amendment, nor has Congress ever proposed to take it away. A larger membership of the court, which is unproposed, would be open, still be open to the objection of those who might make it, namely that a majority of the court should not be entrusted with such great power, because then we could have, instead of five to four decisions, twenty-one to twenty decisions, a bare majority of one. My friends, the separation of the three branches of government, each with powers distinct from those of the other two, was a fundamental principle underlying the Constitution. It is clear that the founders made the legislative branch independent of the executive, with power to protect the people against executive usurpation. In a measure, the executive was given the power of veto to check the legislative branch. The Supreme Court was giving the reviewing power as to acts of either the legislative or executive branch exceeding their respective constitutional powers in suits brought by individuals or states to set aside those acts in contravention of their rights. And all this power was lodged in the Supreme Court by the people in the Constitution, which the people wrote through the founders of our country. The definite separation of the three branches of government, each possessing power distinct from the other two, did not find its way into the Constitution by chance or through subterfuge or secrecy. The founders of our government knew what they wanted and exactly what they were doing when the Constitution was adopted. It expressed their philosophy of government and their moral concept of inalienable rights of mankind. They were duly mindful of the tyranny and oppression experienced by the peoples of the world under other forms of governance. They were determined above everything else that tyranny and dictatorship should not exist in a free country. If tyranny was attempted, a judicial review by a limited number of men sitting as a court was provided to protect the people and the states from a despotic central control. Indeed, the founders set up every human device to protect that court, namely life tenure, fixed salary, removal from political bias, and participation in political contest, and a close scrutiny by the Senate of the United States of the ability and person integrity of a judge before he could assume his exalted office. Furthermore, before entering upon their duties, the justices must take a solemn oath before God to deport and defend the Constitution and protect the people's rights under it. Ah, well, our forefathers drafted this provision of the Constitution. By law and by custom, these judges are removed as far as it is humanly possible from all influences in performing their official duties. They are immune from public clamor and from the selfish, greedy, and lobbying influences which it seems impossible to eradicate in their efforts to shape the acts of the executive and legislative branches of our government, state and federal. Difference of opinion between so able and so conscientious a group as the Justice of the United States Supreme Court is unavoidable. No one claims they are infallible. Unanimity in the reasons of decisions in important cases on the part of justices of such diverse experience, redilection, and methods of approach is impossible to obtain in every case. Course, they can't be unanimous. In the one hundred and forty-seven years of its existence, the Supreme Court, in my opinion, has ever been strong compositively in breadth of view, in freedom from bias, in intellectual capacity, in devotion to the furtherance of the welfare of the people, as far as that comes within the province of a court, and in freedom from ambition for political performance. If we cannot get the answer as to the constitutionality of an act of Congress from the individuals of such a court, we cannot expect to get it at all. But the fathers did not leave us merely to the mercy of the Supreme Court. Far if the Supreme Court proves mistaken in their reading of the highest expression of the public will as embodied in the Constitution, and the Constitution itself no longer conforms to the new types of social and industrial legislation which the people desire, then, by the very terms of the Constitution written by the fathers, the people are guaranteed the right to make their desires effective through the solemn process of amendment. Reference has been made to the long period of time it may to amend the Constitution. After the Senate submitted the prohibition amendment to the people, it was adopted by more than three-fourth of the state in nine months. The lame duck amendment, after submitted by the Congress to the people, was adopted by three-fourth of the state within eleven months. I am not arguing against the right to amend the Constitution, or the right to discuss the opinions of the Supreme Court. Those rights are clear, definite, and absolute. Let us not forget, however, that the Constitution may be as especially destroyed by the amending process as by direct attack. What we must preserve above everything else are the principles that are basic and are fundamental, the forms which go to the heart of our liberty. Proposed amendments should be openly and fully discussed. It is not the proposal and advocacy of amendments that are the greatest danger. In my opinion, before any constitutional amendment is adopted, three things should appear. First, that there is a present necessity for the amendment. Second, that the amendments proposed will remove the existing or threatened evils. Third, that if adopted, the amendment will not in itself produce a greater evil than the present condition. In view of the long, able, and patriotic service of the judicial branch of our government since its very beginning, we should take no hasty action, then to curtail or prevent the Supreme Court from exercising its present powers and functions. Time has repeatedly justified the past decisions of the court, which have occasionally disappointed certain political or economic interests. Time will reaffirm this viewpoint in the future. Delay, delay, enabling calm and deliberate consideration before taking impetuous action, will furnish the time to prove the justification of the decision. Let me remind you of the tremendous injury and stupendous result that might follow from the acceptance of proposed changes. Every right, large or small, that an American citizen possesses, even the ordinary right to vote, depends upon the integrity of the Constitution, and the integrity of the Constitution depends upon the power of the Supreme Court to protect it against raids from the Congress. History has again and again demonstrated that the inalienable rights of our fathers declared, which they declared were God-given, could be abrogated by rash decisions of men temporarily swept into power at times of great emotional passion and sudden political upheaval. The fathers boldly proclaim that the violation of inalienable rights justified revolution. Think of it, they have boldly proclaimed that the violation of inalienable rights justified revolution, that's why they went to war against the mother country. They were paying for places that were inalienable rights, no thanks to men or to government for them, they said. These come from God, and governments are instituted to protect, to defend, to secure them, and to give mankind the blessings of inalienable rights. Free speech, free press, free religion, trial by jury, habeas corpus, protection against search of homes and seizure of private papers without warrant, free assembly, free ballot, and freedom of petition, these they declared were such inherent rights that no government worthy of the name could abridge or deny them. Hence they determined that no executive or temporary autocratic legislative majority should ever interfere with the exercise and enjoyment of these rights by the people of the United States. The Supreme Court, in my judgment, was established as a barrier against the necessity of revolution if either the executive or the legislative branch attempted to take these rights from the people. This, the Supreme Court, in my opinion, is the fortress, the arsenal, the standing army of the American people in the protection and enforcement of the inalienable rights which lovers of liberty in every civilized land poured out their blood and treasure to enjoy.
Thank you, Senator Walsh. Now we have a few minutes for questions. For fear some of you may think there has been a mistake in introducing the speakers tonight, let me explain that my introduction was correct. The first gentleman who spoke, who had some doubts as to the perfection of the Supreme Court, was the professor, and the gentleman who has no such doubts is the senator and is a Democrat. All right, now let's have your question. Rise and state to whom it is addressed, right here.
Senator Walsh, please explain how these inalienable rights happen to be included as the first ten amendments to the Constitution.
Senator Walsh, will you explain how these inalienable rights happen to be put into the first ten amendments to the Constitution?
That could be easily answered, because the several states, or the majority of them, refused to ratify the Constitution unless they were given assurance that the first act after the ratification of the Constitution would be the adoption of the ten amendments which contain inalienable rights.
Now I have a question addressed to Dean McVane as to whether or not the abolition of judicial review- of judicial review might get us into serious political trouble. What do you have to say about that, Dean McVane? You haven't advocated the abolition of judicial review.
I have not and do not. The question is, would the, would not the loss of the power of judicial review by the Supreme Court undermine our federal system? I happened to be upstairs there when some of the questions were being, or some discussions were taking place before we went on the air, and I heard read an opinion of Mr. Justice Holmes, in which he said he did not think the United States would come to an end if the power of the Supreme Court to declare laws of Congress void were withdrawn. I agree with Mr. Justice Holmes that it would not come to an end. I think, ladies and gentlemen, it's very difficult to estimate what would be the effect upon Congress, once having had this, uh, barrier under which it enacts all of its legislation. I do not know what the effect upon Congress would be to have that barrier taken away and be placed fully upon its own responsibility. I do not think it would do the unheard-of things that are sometimes suggested it might do. I tried to indicate that in what I had to say. Congress might, however, for little time at any rate, enjoy its freedom too largely. And I think the tendency would be for Congress to encroach somewhat more upon the power of the reserved powers of the states than it has done here before. I could go on with this quite a long time, because it's a very large question, I suppose, I suppose that should be all I'd say, I should say on it.
Senator Walsh, according to the Constitution, in your candid opinion, is the Supreme Court excelling their power when they declare acts of Congress unconstitutional?
Is the Supreme Court going outside its powers when it declares an act unconstitutional if Congress has passed it? Senator Walsh?
No. If it is, it's been doing it for hundred and forty years.
May I ask Mr. McVane a question? Uh, Mr. McVane, did I understand you to say that you still refuse to believe that the present Congress, uh, has not the same feeling, these may not be your words, but I think it's the idea, regarding the Constitution, as is predicted by some dire things that are supposed to be happening? Did you not say that toward the end of your address?
What I had in mind there is that certain persons say that if this power of the Court were withdrawn, Congress would enact laws taking over the educational system of the country, would enact laws dealing with marriage and divorce, and any number of other things which are now regulated by the states. I don't believe that Congress would do that.
That is what I'm getting at.
Well, and then I didn't get your question correctly.
You seem to still retain a great deal of respect to this present New Deal Congress as not having overridden. Is that true? But I haven't asked my real question. Mr. Chairman, uh, I wanted to find out if I'm not correct. But I have a real question to ask after he, uh...
Well, I'm sorry, I can't let you make the speech like that.
That's why I, I put it in the form of a question. I put it in the form of a question. Won't be a speech. Well, in view of his statement, I want to know if, uh, in view of what happened under the NRA, the passing of that by the President who he accomplished, regimenting of the people all the way from a little pan presser who, uh, uh... Now wait a minute, now wait a minute. Oh, no. This is a question.
Senator Walsh, you said that the majority of the people passed the American Constitution. Woodrow Wilson in the history of the American people states that a very small minority of the American people passed the Constitution. Is it or is this not true? Furthermore, is it...
The American people are a small minority of the American people attached to the Constitution, using the term, but...
Well, the Constitution was, of course, adopted by a small number of people compared with the present population of our country. I think there were, my memory serves me correctly, there were six, about six million people, perhaps sixty, ten million people, or less. Three million, three million. Uh, in this country at the time, they adopted the Constitution, and now, of course, hundred thirty million people. Your question, please.
Senator Walsh, how do you account for the fact that in England, without a Supreme Court, Parliament generally behaves?
How does it happen that the English Parliament behaves, Senator Walsh?
I rather expected that question. To the credit of the English, in my opinion, they're about the only country that hasn't behaved, and that hasn't got a Supreme, that has, has not had a Supreme Court. The, uh, House of Lords, however, have the right of review of acts of the Parliament and in, of acts of Parliament, and, uh, there is an appeal to the House of Lords for interpretation of the acts of Parliament in many cases. Uh, the, uh, it is not true that the Parliament have a law, have exclusive control and exclusive interpretation of their own law. Though I do say, and I want to repeat it, that I do think the English have succeeded admirably well under the system they have without such an exclusion as our Supreme Court.
Next question.
Dean McVane, granting all the imperfections of the present system as you have described, what would you suggest we know about it?
I wish I could tell you. That really is much too large a question to answer. I should really like to see the situation in which the Supreme Court exercised this power, only in cases it was so clear that there wouldn't be any question about this five to four or six to three. I should like to see the Supreme Court exercise judicial review to prevent Congress from overstepping itself when there was really an emergency overstepping, when Congress attempted to do some of the utterly fool things that I, it is suggested that Congress might do, and Congress has done a few of them.
How many minutes do we got?
We've got about half a minute.
I should say, for example, to illustrate that the Supreme Court would have been most derelict in its duty, in its duty, if it had not by unanimous vote, hell void, the Cotton Control Act, the Potato Control Act, the, um, the Tobacco Control Act. There isn't the smallest question in my mind, or I think the mind of anybody who knows anything about the subject at all, that Congress had no power to enact those laws.
Thank you, Dean McVane. Evidently, we can't get all your questions answered tonight, looks as if we'd have to have this subject up again at another town meeting in the air. Now we must let Mr. Havrilla have the air for a moment, he has some important announcements. Mr. Havrilla?
Next week at this hour, we are to discuss the topic, Can We Solve the Crime Problem? We are to have the honor of hearing Major General John F. Orion, former police commissioner of New York City, Stanford Bates, federal commissioner of prisons, and Dr. Henry Pratt Fairchild, professor of sociology of New York University. Representing the radio audience will be Mr. Tom Brown of Chicago, whose letter was selected as the most constructively useful of all the letters written in on the topic. Tonight's speeches, including the questions and answers, will be reprinted in pamphlet form and available at the nominal cost of ten cents. You may write for a copy direct to the League for Political Education, the Town Hall, 123 West Forty-third Street, New York City. I'll repeat that, the League for Political Education, the Town Hall, 123 West Forty-third Street, New York City. Please write or print your name clearly. Reprints of all previous town meeting broadcasts are also available. Town meeting next week, town meeting next week. How can we solve the crime problem? Town meeting next week. This is the National Broadcasting Company.